Between those two meetings, we have a lot going on and wanted to make sure we had ability to do action items at both meetings because of the important things that we had to discuss.
Absolutely. I was gonna mention that in the end, but you're right. That is another point that we want to make. That will be on the 18th and information is going out to our retirees and our board members who won't be with us any longer. So yes, that'll be on that 18th.
Great idea. So I will make the motion to make, go ahead.
I'm not sure. Does it require a motion?
Yeah, because of
Thank you.
Action ideas.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Well, I'll make the motion to make the January 11th, 2021 Board Meeting a regular Board Meeting.
I second that.
Thank you, sir.
We have a first and a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, Jeff, would you like to take a roll call vote?
Alicia.
Yes.
Dr. Copola.
Aye.
Abby Green.
Yes.
And I am a yes.
Okay, motion carried. Thank you very much. All right, Kevin?
Yes, so our 5.03 is just as last month, we had our Director of Educated Excellence, Jerry Miller, came on and shared the November report. We're gonna add the same thing for December because every month that report needs to be brought to the board. And so I am going to see, and yep, there he is. Jerry, if you would go ahead and share with the board.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Hello, Board. As Mr. Simmons said, every month
Hey, Jerry?
I know Reconfirmation Report. And for just, yes.
Yeah, I, because you froze up and started like a robot, so I know that when you take your video off, that you'll be able to share, then we can at least hear you.
I sounded awesome here, so sorry, guys. All right, so Kevin or Angie, I can see your face. If you'll raise a hand and tell me to stop if I turn robot again. So
Will do.
The monthly reconfirmation plan is presented monthly for as long as we are in this pandemic environment. And it provides two things. It provides a reconfirmation on how our instruction is being presented. And also it provides the rate to which we have made contact with our students in two-way interactions. And while the goal from the state of Michigan is 75%, you'll notice that our success rate now for two months in a row is much, much higher than that. So that, I hope everyone will celebrate. So this November report being reported in December, the information that the board approved when we went to all remote learning. And it also provides flexibility for us using the Calhoun County Health Department's information if we had to change in between reports. So it provides that flexibility so that we don't have to keep making notes the course of a month. The next session comments is where I would share anything from the survey that's on our website where these are posted. And the public has a right to look at the original plan and also to look at these learning reconfirmation reports. And there
Hey, Jerry, were you, were you presenting or are you gonna show that sheet after?
I'm sorry, I thought it was in their packet. I'd be
No, that's okay, because if in your pack, it is in our packet. I said no while you were going over it so that you knew that we weren't looking at it with you. We're looking at it on our packet. So yes.
Okay. So the last section I have, if you have it in your package, you can see it there. But our principals, the teachers, and Trevor and I, as we go through our two-way interaction rates, we're well above 90% with the one-way interaction being put in there with that, or yeah, one two-way interaction, we're at 97, you know, 95%. So any questions on that report, I'd be glad to answer them. Comments from the public at the end of the meeting on this, we'd be, I'd be happy to document. But
Just a, um, just one question. That report is actually under our executive comment, content, so it's not available to the public? Does it need to be?
This is already published on our website. Because it's a document that's required no matter what happens anywhere else. It's already there under our Return to Learn, be at the bottom, and it's called the ECOOL, Reconformation Meeting, and it's cumulative. So every report we've done can be found there so they can look at our progress over time.
Thanks. Hey, Kevin, it would be kind of nice, there are some people that actually go in here and look at the content before the board meeting. So if it's something that doesn't have to be confidential or, you know, is not sensitive in nature, maybe we could put it under public content if, if it's appropriate.
Sure, we will make sure that we're able to do that and
I can move it right now while we're talking.
No problem. Thank you.
Hey, Jerry was also, I'm sorry if I cut you off, Jerry, but you were also gonna share that on the page, the actual survey they can fill out that's also with it? Is that still an attachment on that ECOOL?
It is. Yep. And I did reference that, but I don't mind to say again that all of our documents are there. And at the bottom is a survey that I monitor. And that central, center section that I was reviewing, that's what that last sentence is all about. That if we did have public comments, I'd report on numbers and, and put them into groupings. So.
So that link is on the one on the website, not on this one that we have, right?
There is, there is no link on this document. Because it would create a circle, because the link on the website goes to this document.
Okay, thank you.
So Jerry, Jerry, my question is more of a qualitative one. And that is, is that, so what strategies seem to have increased the numbers in terms of contacts? And then, did we see a accompanying improvement in student performance as a result of it? I mean, it's, it's great that we're getting these kind of numbers, but I'm interested to whether or not we have a company improvement in child, children, kids' performances and how parents have been improving with So I don't know if that's data that you collected or if you give it any thought to it, but speculation that you would find.
So this certainly would not be data I would collect for this report, because this report is a public report that goes to SEPI at the state of Michigan and is posted in my school data. And they would just toss it out, they would throw it out. But as far as student performance data, I do work with the principals and making sure they can use Illuminnet and data, whoa, data director, I went back in time, Illuminnet and, and a couple of other resources so that they can measure that. So we do have our mid-year, which is our first coming up in January. And we can show mid-year growth after those assessments are complete. And I worked with the principals this week to set those dates and get those timelines ready to roll.
That will also, also be the, after the first semester grades that are shared secondary with the board that Abby mentioned at the board meeting. I want to say we'll see the last board meeting or the media, media meeting before. I spoke with Tim Everett and she shared, he shared with me where that report is so I can bring it to the board in January to where it looks the same based on what that presentation has been before.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
You are welcome. If you have any questions on these, don't hesitate to ask.
Thank you.
So and if I may, Abby, I'm gonna go right into the next presentation and discussion, which is budget revision. And we have our very own business official. No, we have our very own
You have that detail in your packet. I will not be going over that in length detail. We would be here for a really long time if we did that. So everything you see here will be summary form. But if you do have questions about individual line items or in that detail, that's something that you can get in contact with Kevin and we could set up a meeting to kind of go through that detail if, if you wanted to. But it is in there for your review. Also, there's a couple attachments in there too of summary sheets that on the past few years, prior to when we had the committee as a whole, we used to have a finance committee. They had, is there. I don't have them on my slideshow, but you all have that information for you to review too. And if you have any questions with that, I'd be more than happy to, to answer those questions.
So Angie?
So
Let me, let me ask a question. Did Angie freeze on her conversation with anybody else or was it just my computer? She did freeze there for a minute?
Yes.
Angie, you might, I don't know if you can do your
Yes.
Video off as you still go through it? Can you try that, Angie? See if that works?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you want me to repeat what I just went through or just move?
Just forward. I think, I think the last part that you were sharing was pretty much what we're looking at is what you're getting ready to go through. Like you're getting ready to tell us what is actually, what you're getting ready to share.
Right. All I was explaining before was all the attachments that you received on board docs and just going, letting you know what I'm gonna go over. And if you have any questions on the other documents, just feel free to get in contact with Kevin.
Something up there.
Okay. Better now, Kevin?
Yes, yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so as we've talked about in previous board meetings, the state this year is going with this super blend student count, which we're very thankful for this year, as you'll see in a couple slides down, I did some comparison. But with the super blend count, it actually is taking 90, or I'm sorry, 75% of last year's student count and 25% of this year's student count and blending that, which has really helped us out. With that, so our student count we're getting funding on is 21, 24.92 allowance is $8,111. And that's the same as what last year's foundation allowance was before the proration that they had given us. In this budget, in the first budget that I brought to you guys in June, we did not have any bus purchases, vans, anything like that. We had taken that, that stuff out just because we didn't really know where our funding was gonna be. So in this one, we have added in, we are able to add in one bus to purchase, two vans, which board members that have been here in the past, we've been talking about purchasing these vans for smaller don't have a bus driver. And sometimes we've had those issues that allows for a coach or someone else to actually drive that bus.
Okay, Angie, you pause there, you pause there for another second, but I know what you were saying. It was about the small teams that were gonna be on, using the vans because of leaving school early. There's basketball teams, there's cheerleader groups, there's tennis, golf. But there's, there are those teams that are usually trying to leave. Instead of using a whole bus, the coach is able to drive those vans and take those students. So I know that's what you were saying, but you kind of paused out there for a second.
Right, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Sorry, there's been internet issues all day, up and down. So I apologize for that.
A good thing it's a team effort. So I know
That's right.
So Angie, I guess I did have a question about the vans. So, so in terms of two, that was going to be the allowing, say, the women's tennis team and the men's tennis team to go to two different locations, correct?
Right.
That would be example.
It just gives us, right, that's an example. It gives us flexibility for if they have to leave early when our buses aren't back, if we don't have a driver that as far as, you don't have to have a CDL to drive these vans.
And what was our original plan for total number of vans? Did we have more than two or was it just gonna be two?
It's always been two that we've talked about.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. One other thing that we are looking into, and I believe we've brought this up before, is a bus camera system. So some of our buses have camera systems. We're just trying to find a better way that we can access those videos to get more up-to-date equipment on our buses. In that all our buses, we would be running the same cameras and video system on all of our buses. So we're also working on that, meeting with some companies right now. And then an RFP will go out for that. And you'll get more information on that once we get further down the road. But that has been added into the budget. We still do not have any capital projects planned for lots of reasons. Just having people in our building, you know, our buildings are closed, having people in the buildings. Originally with our funding, we really weren't sure where we are going with the bond, just a lot of issues. So right now, we just don't have any capital projects planned at this moment. All staff have received at least a 2% raise. So that's something that in our first budget where we didn't have any raises included in there. So that, that's been great. One thing we've received COVID-19 federal funds, about $1.1 million that we've received in federal funds. And then we also have received a $65 per pupil increase, which is a one-time funding amount. And that's a little bit over $141,000. So those are some of the big factors in moving with this budget revision. Also, one I didn't add on here, most of you will know that with the first budget revision, it's always kind of making sure, like we have staff changes throughout the summer. It's kind of getting all those staff changes in order and in place and actually having them where they are. So there's some fluctuation in there too. But that's, that happens every, on the first budget revision.
Couple of questions before, any further, Angie?
Sure.
One, maybe a little off topic, but the two new vans. Just curious, do we have any intentions on getting those, you know, wrapped or just simple lettering?
Um, yeah.
Angie?
Pardon me, I didn't hear the last part.
That's for Kevin or you?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, we actually have it to where they're striped and they also are green and white. And they also have pin-filled schools. And they also have a logo, which is the actual panther that's on the side of the van. So it's not, it's not a, oh, how can you say, just a white van that we'll be pulling up in with our athletes, kids in our school to be represented really well. And these vans will do just that.
Sounds great, right down the lines of what I was thinking. Angie, what do we have spent out of that COVID-19 federal funds?
So I'm gonna get into that in just a second. So let me, if you don't mind, I would like to present a couple more slides. And then if you still, if your question .57. So even with the super blend, we are still down 48.64 FTE on what we're receiving in state funding. So Oh, sorry.
It's okay. So our actual fall count this year was 1,961, basically, right?
Oh, 1,000, well, right, 1,000, 1,960.85 was the fall count, right?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So this next screen, this is actually what I'm asking the board to approve tonight. So this is a summary form of that long spreadsheet that's line-by-line budget. And so I break this out and put this into summary form, and that's what the board actually approves. You'll see in that top part, the revenue is broke out by the local sources. Intermediate revenue is money that we receive from the ISD or through the ISD, our state sources and federal sources. And then same with the expenditures. It just breaks it down by those categories and shows those expenditures. You'll see Yes.
I, I noticed on the detail that you had adjusted football and the fall sports income to actual, which is I, what line does that come in on, on this one? Is that on the local source line?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So on this, I'm gonna start off at this bottom line. And can you see my cursor when I move it, Kevin?
Yes, if you could, if you could, I know everybody can see the full screen with the whole page. But if you could make it a little larger and then we'll just be able to try to work with you from there. My eyes are not as good as the rest, but
If I make, if I make it larger
Yes, that's good. Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
I think I'll leave it here instead of putting it into my, the presentation format, if you don't mind, and we'll see how that works. Okay. So as I scroll down here, I'm gonna scroll down to the bottom here. And this is where, talking with Jeff where he was asking like what's left. Now, this isn't so much what's left necessarily, a .7% fund balance. If you move over here to this column with, it's like, oh, what can we do with that 81,000, you know, if, if we wanted to. And it's just being conservative and watching that for what's gonna come next year. We really lost 194.56 FTE from 1920 to 2021. And that's a lot of, that's a lot of FTE to gain back in one year. Some of you will remember, we went through another year where we lost, but we lost about 100 and we did end up gaining that back. But that's only about half of what we're talking about today. So that's, I just wanted to bring that to your attention as I think we're doing great right now. And things look good, but it's just also taking that projection and kind of looking out to the future just to make sure that, that that's in the back of our mind as we move forward here.
So I think that Jeff, your question was maybe similar to mine, ask it a different way. And then if it's not what your question was, you can add to that. But the COVID relief funds, those are for specific purposes? Are, are those for specific purposes? And do you have to keep track of what you spend it on and then turn in a report? Or is it just for us to use however we need to?
So yes, the COVID relief funds are for specific purposes. But we were able to use salaries and benefits to cover that. So it, it lessened up our general fund.
It wasn't all new.
So I was able to move those salaries, the principals, Jerry's position, Trevor's position, everybody that was working with the district to plan what we were gonna do, how we were gonna have school go, how we were gonna present that, the professional development in that. So really, those CRF funds were used for, replaced our salary and benefits. Now, as far as reporting for that, yes, I will need to report for that separately. But the federal government has issued, they've tried to make it easy, which is great, that the first, that they will reckon $500 per FTE that you've used for PPE for all these other areas in that. So we've been told now that they will not be going in and doing a specific audit on those funds. But we did have to have, I mean, I Um, but we did have to have, I mean, I have it documented, so if they decide to change their mind and you should have used it to prepare um for educating our students during this pandemic. So and that's where I kind of say if we took those CRF funds out because they were really, we rose for part of salary and benefits for teachers, um for principals and for some administrators. How, and that's where you see where it affects that bottom line even more. Now, there is money in there for PPE and stuff like that. There's been a lot of PPE that we've purchased. Um, the dust, the um the sprayers to clean, um masks and gloves and gowns um and cleaning supplies and stuff like that. And we do have um that on hand and ready to go with and people that are in the buildings, if they have a need for that, we do have that for them.
What is the balance left, Angina?
So that's where I was saying, they're really, the balance of the budget is that $81,000. So because I used the salary and benefits, I use all of the CRF funds for those salary and benefits to move that. So but then that frees up some of our regular general ed money. So if you want to say what the amount of money that we don't have accounted for right now for a purchase is $81,000. That doesn't-
Okay.
That's not, so I I understand what you're saying, but it wasn't, so honestly, I could say there are no CRF funds available because I've already earmarked those away from with something else.
That answers it.
Yeah, okay.
Gotcha. We're on the same page.
Okay. We do have, there are some other, there was about four different pots of money that came with the coronavirus. And we do have one uh that's called gear funds and that's for some technology. So that's basically for student technology or technology to use in um educating kids at this time. And there is some money left in those funds and Tammy and Trevor and myself are working on the um how to use those funds up, but that, those are very specific and very earmarked just for technology. As far as we received two other small pots of money and basically those were used for PPE and stuff like that. But all the, all the COVID money has been accounted for except for that little bit of gear money.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. Is there any other questions?
If there are no other questions, do you need a? Okay, keep going.
Yeah, then I just wanted to, just one other thing, we talk about um the variance between like I'll obviously bring at least one more budget revision. And if we find something drastically has changed, we can, you know, bring another one or or whatever, but for sure, there'll be one in June. And we'll talk about that. Now, one thing I will say about this budget and factors that change, now that our buildings are closed at the moment, as far as the students coming in and stuff, um, we're able to save a lot on utilities. I did not make that adjustment in this budget, so I know that there'll be savings there and also depending on the winter that we have. But just right now, we're saving by not having the heat and all the electricity and everything running in all those buildings all the time. Uh, PE, um, right now, we're not using as much PPE as we will use uh when we have all the students and teachers back in the building. So that could go one way or the other, depending on, you know, how long we're um doing remote learning. Um, also with teaching supplies and the transportation expense. The transportation expense and maintenance are are two big categories outside of salary and benefits with the teachers and that. And those also are the areas that have the most fluctuation because we just don't ever know um when a bus is gonna break down. So there's always extra money in that area or how much diesel fuel is gonna be or what our utilities are gonna run. So there's definitely a lot of fluctuation in there. I try to um budget conservatively. So that it's always comes in better than what we have. But this um with this year with the buildings being closed and just not knowing how long that's gonna be and there's even gonna be even more room where there's gonna be fluctuation in those areas. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention tonight.
Thank you.
And even being 100% virtual right now, all of our employees are on payroll, correct?
Yes, they are.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. Um, so with that, um, yes, Abby, this is um what I'm asking to be approved tonight. And if there's any other questions.
Um, if there aren't any other questions for Angina, um I would um accept a motion to approve this budget revision.
I'll make a motion that this budget revision be adopted by the Board of Education.
I second that.
Thank you, Alicia. All right, we have a a motion and a second to adopt the budget revision. Uh, Jeff, would you take a roll call, please?
Any discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot that one. Any discussion? Okay, thank you. All right, Jeff.
Alicia?
Yes?
Dr. Coppola?
Hi.
Abby Green?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
Okay, motion carried. Thank you very much. Angina, you do a very nice job of presenting. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and I am going to um move into administrative reports. Abby, uh, which is uh 6.01, which is the finance expenditure report. Um, any questions for Angina? Or any questions about the finance expenditure report?
I don't hear any.
Okay, so I am then going to go into the uh personnel report. And as noted in the personnel report, we have three three uh new hires that were accomplished over the last few weeks. And we uh do look for board action on these three employees and I am gonna even check to see if they're actually here. Um, our new hire, we hired a new transportation director, Ricky Emery. Ricky is coming to us from Portland Schools. And he uh comes highly recommended, should I say, his background in compliance and being a director and making sure of working with the cameras going on the buses, he, he had to hit the ground running. And believe me, he's got the energy to get in there and try to get some things done so we can get ready for our return with our students. Um, is uh Tammy, do you know if Ricky joined us tonight or not?
No, they, they are not on this link, Kevin.
Oh, okay, okay, that's right. Well, and um everybody is aware of the fact that Shar, who's been working with us for years in our transportation department, that her service is truly uh uh we're truly thankful for the work that she's done and working with our uh drivers and with our parents. She, her last day is gonna be January the 8th. But she is in transition right now, working with Ricky and making sure that he's the uh get as much as he can with making sure we have a smooth transition. And she has also agreed that if we need her to come back for any reason, he said that she told her, yep, just give her a call. That's because Shar is true uh green and white when it comes to Penfield Panthers and supporting this community. So uh Ricky Emery is gonna be our new transportation director. Uh, we hired a new fifth grade teacher, a Kip O'Leary. Kip O'Leary is um becoming a fifth grade teacher and um Sherry Glass is going to be an assistant principal at Dunlop. So she was the fifth grade teacher.
At Dunlop, uh she's our new principal at Purdy, right? That position has been vacant since the beginning of the year.
That's correct. Sarah Taylor is now the new principal at Purdy Elementary. That's correct. Thank you.
Didn't you accept these, you said?
Yes, please, yes.
Okay. I will accept the motion. Okay.
I make a motion that we uh accept the recommendations of Superintendent Simmons for the hire of our three new employees. Uh, with a special thank you to uh Shar who will be leaving us next month. Uh, I take it, Abby, that we will be inviting Shar to our uh 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 meeting next month and we will be having a party.
Absolutely, yeah. Do I get a second?
I will gladly second that.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, discussion. All right, I have a motion with a second. Uh, all in favor? Jeff, would you like to take a roll call?
Abby Green?
Yes.
Dr. Coppola?
Hi.
Alicia?
Yes?
I am a yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. Thank you. Good work.
Awesome. So uh we are at the um seven, 7.01, Abby with comments from the public.
Uh, we still don't have anybody that has submitted to speak this evening.
Okay, thank you.
I'm guessing the link is quite a bit messed up. I've got quite a few text messages on not streaming, so.
Yeah, that, that's nothing to do with streaming. The uh the form that they have to fill out so that they can speak at this meeting, we didn't have anybody request to speak. Uh, the live stream is down and up and down and I think that's a Google thing and has been all day. So I've started recording this and we we can make that available to people tomorrow.
You are awesome. Thank you.
Awesome. So with, I'm sorry, go ahead, Abby.
I was gonna say, I think we're superintendent comments.
Uh, yes, we are. And I do have three comments that I would um like to share tonight. I'm going to start with the um the Calhoun County Health Department shared a document which is uh being used by superintendents in the county and in the neighboring counties of Berry and Branch, they are going to their um their districts and they're sharing this document. The document is attached and to the board docs. It is considered the risk of COVID transmission in schools is a framework for the public health recommendations. Uh, this is one that uh Eric Pesel out of uh director at the Calhoun County Health Department. He has worked with the other directors across the state and this is a document that was created out in Kent County and is now being utilized or should I say talked about in Calhoun County, but is also now being circulated around other uh counties also. And there's two parts to this document that I want to share and that I will during my check-ins, while I'm talking with each board member, is this is gonna be an important piece for the board to decide in January. Uh, January the 11th, if this is a document that they want to adopt to be used and there's a part one and a part two. The part one is you plug in the numbers, which I'm going to share with you and uh the email that actually came from Eric. And it has three numbers that is associated with this document. When you plug in the three numbers, it talks about and is related only to Penfield Township in the school districts. And our number is 824. And then it gives the Penfield incident rate, which is 1,073. And I can share with you before it was 1,007. So that has gone up since uh the last few days. So when you plug these numbers in, what I'm gonna share is this with part one and part two. We could either have the board, once I do my check-ins and explain it to each one of you. A part one says if the numbers are above the 10% rate, then the extracurricular activities and athletics will not continue or come back online until that number, and it first starts with the county rate. But I'll be able to say exactly what that number is because it's shared with us every Wednesday. Part two is about the returns room or returning, or should I say remaining remote. So that part two says if the- Because remember, what I will make clear when I'm talking to each one of our board members as we get into January or if any of them want me to check in with them this month and in January before the 11th, is part one about athletics and and extracurricular activities. The reason they're taking it to their school boards in the area is some school districts may not have athletics going until their number comes down while others in the area could start their programs because their numbers are lower. So it kind of goes to how well the community is doing with these rates. So I will get into more detail, but I do want you to know, I'm gonna send you this email and you'll be able to put it with the actual form. So, go ahead.
So I did look that form over and it uh looks to me like um although we have some numbers we can plug in, it is still a guideline that there is some judgment and flexibility and on that, right?
That is correct.
That true? Okay, so um and that even if the board decides to use this as a guideline, we're not talking about making it a policy or just a hard and fast rule that we'll use it, right? It's just one tool in our tool belt.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
It's a guide, it's correct.
So few things, we can talk in person on a bunch of questions I have. So for anybody watching, can you explain this, the 14%? There's a lot of questions, where do we get 14%? Can you explain out of the test given? I'll let you explain, go ahead.
Yes, and and here's the other thing that I would um was also going to share because Eric came to the board meeting and kind of went over this with the board members and he's also visited some of the other districts. My intent was to also bring him back to also share with new members. But let me see if I could make this a big picture answer to your question, Jeff, is that the county takes the number of people per 100,000 that's in the county and they take the number of incidents that have occurred. Need they be positive tested or if they're quarantined? And they take that and divide it by 100,000 people based on how many 100,000 actually live in the county. And that's how they get the percentage. Now, I know, I know the health department can explain it better, but they just take those two big numbers and divide one by the other and that's how they get the 14%.
So the biggest thing I want to clarify for everybody that's watching, this is not 14% positive by any means. This is someone that has been in contact, quarantined, anything to do with COVID-related and are on the health department's registry now is 14%. That's what they're using.
That's correct because, because it actually says seven day percent positive. And then there is an incident rate. So that 14% is those who are tested positive based on that number. But there's an incident rate and that's with the larger number of those being quarantined. So when I send this email, it should point that out also.
I know I'll get that. I'm, I'm for the community and everybody that's watching, just trying to explain where where this 14% is. So um if you could, please email that to me because I don't even see it on my uh agenda. I don't see it as an attachment either, so.
You know what? I think this is a piece that's in your Google Doc. The board's Google Doc that we put all the-
No, no, this is attached to the agenda. It's under, it's in the superintendent comments. It says a Calhoun School Framework.
Go under executive content. If you don't see it under executive content, it could be that you're not um completely logged in.
Okay. I'm not worried about that right now. If I'll go to search it. If not, I'll uh I'll shoot you guys an email and if you could just make sure that I get that.
Absolutely.
Could we make this a document uh public, please?
Yes, this would be another one of those documents like Abby mentioned earlier. We'll just move it over for public use also.
Perfect, thank you.
Good point, good point. And, um, so that's, that's my second, that's my second comment. Oh, that's the first one. Second one is about, the second one is about the, um, the education plan that was approved back in August, which is the one that said that we have K-12 that is hybrid and six twelve that is, um, virtual right now, that I will be sharing with board members, the conversation before the 11th, that there's three options that I would hope you would take a look at before we get to the 11th, when you start to make your decisions. The first one is the way it is right now, is it is six twelve that is, uh, virtual and a K-five that is a hybrid. The second one is the one that goes, all the students are back, but instead of four days a week, it's two days and two days to where we split the students in half. And splitting the students in half will be done based on the actual last name. So therefore, a number of families will be on the buses that are being used because of their last name. We do understand, we have parents whose kids have different last names. We'll be able to work, that's another reason we'll need three weeks, in trying to work to make sure that we have family that can be getting on the bus on the same days, need to be Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday. And the reason I'm talking four days with that split is based on allowing one day for parents who would say they would like to keep their child virtual. So that is a split of the actual students that could keep numbers down. If a teacher in secondary has a class of thirty, that could keep those students' role for each class down to about fifteen. That is more like Marshall, more like Harper Creek and what their high schools are doing in their secondaries. And then there's the third option, which is all students are back, all kids are still switching classes, all students are still going to mixed lunches, all students are on the buses. I would say that that is more of a Comic Scott and a Ha- uh, Hastings to where they've got all the students back. But again, bearing in mind that we have one day for those parents who may choose that they want their child virtual, that we only do that four days a week so that teachers can still care for the virtual students who are not, uh, parents are not comfortable with them returning to school yet. So there's three options, and I'm gonna say these backwards because it'll make a little more sense. All the students are back four days a week. One day is going to be used for virtual. All the students, that means a teacher will have a class of about twenty-five, could be up to twenty-seven, because we don't know until we actually ask the question to parents. That's the largest class size four days a week. Second option is gonna be to ask parents if, uh, if the board says, no, we want to be a little safer, we want to at least have half the kids in the classroom, then that would be a split. Instead of four days a week, there's only two days a week. It's kind of like the K-five that we have right now. One group is Monday, Tuesday, one group is Thursday, Friday. Wednesday is used for virtual learning and virtual teaching. Again, that model is more like Marshall, more like Harper Creek and what they're doing at their high schools, which would then look the same at our middle schools and our high schools. And then the third option coming down is that it's the same as it is now to where there is five, excuse me, there is K-five that is in hybrid and six twelve is in virtual. So I'm going to make our check-in calls and explain these pieces to each one of you as I go through all the board members so that a decision could be an informed decision with purpose when we get to January the 11th. And that if there's extra questions that comes out of the 11th, there's an opportunity to move forward from there. Right now, our staff is preparing for returning on the 18th, the way that we left, which is the K-five with the hybrid system in place. However, we would need to hear from the board on the 11th because we are going to send out this week. Jackie and I are gonna send out a survey that is going to ask parents about the top two options. All kids in, four days a week, class sizes up to thirty, not much social distance that can take place. Second option, all kids are in, except we're cutting it in half, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. And then we're going to ask the parents to let us know what they prefer. Why is that going out this week? Because it gives them a holiday break. We come back January the 4th and we're able to share the data a week in advance before we get to January the 11th. In my conversation. Yes, Jackie?
They will also have the option if they're, if they wish to remain virtual. There is that option as well. So all three options are there.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you for reminding me.
One thing I ask, uh, Mr. Simmons, can you put a survey question in there for one hundred percent in person, K through five, please?
One hundred percent K through five.
Can you explain that a little more, five days a week?
If there's a parent that says that they'd much rather have their child to be virtual, we wouldn't have a teacher that would be able to teach them because they're teaching students five days a week.
I under, I understand. I just, I am asking for it to be one of the questions to see what our community wants to do. That's just a question.
So I think.
We're not deciding, we're not deciding any, let's get as much information as we can so we can talk between now and the 11th and we can get a game plan on the 11th. So whatever way the board decides to go on the 11th, um, it shouldn't take three weeks to, to get the process going. So if we can get as much in rolling now, then we can be prepared for whatever the board decides to do on the 11th.
Okay, Jeff, so what I will do is not, I will not only put that in for K-five, I'm putting that in for six eight two, I mean, six twelve. Any, anybody that says, I want five days a week, because then we'll know if we get someone that says, I would like virtual only. So we'll put it in both ways.
Perfect, thank you.
So you're gonna have, I just want to clarify, we're gonna have one question that says, I want virtual only, and then we're gonna have a separate question that says, I want, um, five days a week, in addition to your two hours.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
That kind of what you were looking for, Jeff?
If I, if I could add in though, since like I drafted the, how it's set up is you have a, you have a choice for every single one of these options. So when the board makes their decision, we know what students want to do what. So we're not sending out another survey. So it's worded as such. If the board, um, decides it is a hybrid model, two days, three days of virtual, then I would assign my student. So on Tuesday, whatever decision's made, we can take a look at the data and says, these are the kids that will come for hybrid. These are the kids that would come for four day. So it's set up a little bit different than how you're saying it, Abby, but we'll have more data than we need at the end of it, so.
Yeah, I would think that, um, if you're gonna actually give people their top two choices of those four, then the board is gonna decide something that doesn't fit someone's choice. So you're gonna have to check back with those people no matter what.
Yeah, well, I mean, we've got it set up, so it's, I'm just letting you know, it's a little bit diff- different than what you're presenting, but you'll have the same data, so.
Well, yeah, I think pretty much, we have three questions, each of them being K through five and X through twelve. One question is, do you want to go on virtual? Second question, do you want to go hybrid? Third question is, do you want to go five days in person?
No, I don't, I'm, that's not what I understood.
And I understand what Jeff is asking.
Uh-huh.
So Jeff, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna come back because we're actually looking for parents to make a decision that they know that when the board makes their decision, they're gonna fall into one of these categories. Because if a parent said, I wanted five days a week, and that is not one of the choices that the board chose, that group of parents is gonna be upset saying, okay, but that's not what I chose. But I do understand what your question is. Put it out there so we know who those parents are.
I, yeah, I don't, I don't know how we can ask the parents to choose before the board gives them a choice.
Correct. And that, and I think that, that's the reason why, if, if I may, uh, Abby, I suggested that we waited until after, but because the question is out there and parents are getting frustrated with saying, oh, well, over at Harper Creek, they're asking them and they've already, and I'm going.
That's not really what I was saying either, but.
Yeah.
Go ahead, finish.
Uh, so my intent is that we go ahead and give them an opportunity to get some input, but the decision is not gonna be made until after the board decides on January the 11th.
Correct. Right, so that's, I think that what I'm, what I'm, what I thought we were talking about doing is do an apparent survey, giving them the options that we're considering so that we have their feedback, and then we're gonna make a decision. And then after that, if a parent chose one of the options that we didn't decide on, then you'll have to follow up with them and say, so here's what the board voted on, that, you know, right? Is that what you're thinking, Jeff?
That's what you're saying.
Okay.
Yes, yes. This is to give us data so we can come back on the 11th. We can see what the county's doing, what Penfield's doing, see what's safest and what we can do. Then we're gonna have to do a, basically a permanent survey that week of what you want to do as a parent. Do you want to stay virtual? Do you want to come to school X amount of days? We'd have to gather that data and then roll with it from there. But this, this is to give us some numbers so we can come back on the 11th with some intelligent data saying, this is what seventy-five percent of our community wants to do. This is what, you know, just, just give us some numbers on what our parents want to do now that we're eighteen weeks into the year.
Yes, we will be able to put that out and then be able to share that data.
Perfect.
So, um, will the board be receiving that link also at the same time the parents do?
Oh, that's a good question.
Please, because I haven't been, when we've done those.
You'd like to know what the questions are?
Yeah.
Yes, we will be able to share that.
Great.
Even though some of you already have kids in the district, but those who don't would definitely be sharing that in a different link. We'll say, here's the questions.
That's great. I just want, would like to see it. I don't need to fill it out, yeah.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
So those are, those are, yep, Jeff? Oh, okay.
I, I was just saying, perfect. Thank you for getting it all understood.
Yes, absolutely. So then my last piece that I'm sharing as a, uh, superintendent comments is a thank you to our board members. I, I gotta tell you, I gotta send out a, a big thank you to board members, and I'm going from the 2020 school year. Uh, Jack Wallaston, start with us, Wallaston, you know, I want to send out a thank you to him, to Scott Baxter, Brandon Halting, Donnie Dillsaver, and Alicia, I know you're online. Uh, I, we can't say enough to say thank you for, uh, the work and the commitment that y'all have put forth. And that, again, you still have my cell phone number, and I know that we're gonna be asking you to still get in and work with us, like even with our bond and other, uh, committees that we're working with. But I wanted to personally say thank you to this group. I know we've got January the 18th coming up. We're gonna do some recognition, uh, opportunities, but I wanted to go on record personally with saying that thank you. And, uh, again, as I could, uh, appreciate saying that I look forward to the work with this, uh, new board as we move forward. And just know that the check-ins, as Abby has shared, are very important, that we are communicating outside one-on-one so that we can make sure we're on the same page when we're here in front of everybody. So, uh, that's my comments for tonight. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, there was one other one. Do notice that those superintendent comments, that the, uh, attorney in comments, that Tru Law, that attorney that's worked with this district for years, he's retiring, and that we do have a new name that's gonna be working with us. So, uh, very important, take a look at those superintendent comments.
Thank you. I noticed that, and, um, I don't know, maybe he should come to our retirement recognition too.
We'll invite him. We will invite him.
I would like that. I agree with you, Abby. I think we should, should meet some new attorneys.
Yeah. Will we, will we have that on a future, a soon future agenda to actually meet our new attorney?
Yes.
Could we?
We'll get, we'll get Ray in, most definitely. We want to have the board meet him on a more open conversation, not because of something we need legal advice on first.
Right, perfect. All right.
So that's all my comments for tonight.
And then eight point oh two is November Tru Law Notes. That's just to let us, there was not anything we needed to discuss there?
Nope, that's just there as an update, as the information comes in.
All right. So we are at nine point oh one, board comments. Does anyone have any board comments?
Along with Mr. Simmons, I'd like to thank everybody that has served on this board. We very much appreciate it. Um, if you guys ever need anything, feel free to reach out.
I would like to especially, uh, thank Alicia. Uh, and Alicia, I look forward to working with you on the, uh, on the, uh, bond, um, journey. And, uh, and other than that, I would also just like to ask, uh, Superintendent Simmons, is, um, I, I know with the, with the way, um, uh, the COVID, uh, has caused a lot of, uh, spikes in technology to occur. Uh, whether or not there's any, um, uh, technology on the market that might allow, uh, because I, I noticed Jeff was interested in, in the same thing as I am in a way, is how we can have our, um, students who choose to continue to be virtual, if there's a way other than, uh, one day a week where they might be able to participate in the classroom, similar to what I mentioned to you before, which was the use of the, uh, technology called the Owl. Um, and so that's, I, I bring that up just as a, as a, um, uh, a technology piece that we think may be of interest to the, to the, uh, to the, to the district.
Absolutely. We had that conversation today, uh, Dr. Coppola, and even though that is a very popular, uh, item that goes until like, I want to say it was April or May, possibility is what, um, uh, Tammy was sharing. But yeah, we are definitely looking into that technology as an opportunity to bring to our district.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, Alicia, any board comments?
I just want to say thank you so much to everybody who supported me, uh, this year. I mean, it wasn't even a whole year I get to, got to be on here, but I learned so much. I am grateful and thankful for everything that I've learned, um, even though I feel like I was in skis on land. But I mean, it was, uh, interesting and I'm very, very, very thankful to, um, all the board members that I got to work with and, uh, the administration and Superintendent Simmons, Jackie, and of course, all the teachers. Uh, I very much want to thank you and put you out there as one of our people we need to thank a lot because of all the hard work you're doing, the extra hours now that we are doing virtually for our students. I just want to say thank you so much for putting that hard work in, and that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Great. Well, and happy holidays to everyone and hope that you all have a nice break here, um, from, from school for a week or so, and we have two week big break, right? When does, when does this Christmas break officially start? This Friday?
This Friday, yes.
Excellent. Okay, if there's no other, um, items, then, uh, I'll take a motion, accept a motion to adjourn.
Alicia, go ahead.
I motion to adjourn.
All right.
I will gladly second that.
All right, could you please take a roll call vote?
Abby Green?
Yes.
Dr. Coppola?
Hi.
I am a yes, and Alicia?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, meeting adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a great night.
Thank you, Alicia. You too.
Thank you.
Hey, Jeff, I'm just alone. Real quick, just to let you know, I'll type up the minutes and then share them with you. And then you're down as the recording secretary, or I'm the recording secretary, you're the board secretary.